Okay, this is the Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee. We're here for the budget hearing for Baltimore City Public Schools. My name's Eric Costello. I'm the councilman from the 11th District and Chair of the Committee. We're joined this evening by Council President Brandon Scott. To my immediate left is Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District. To the President's left, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District. Councilman Zeke Cohen from the 1st District. Councilman Chris Burnett from the 8th District. To my right, we have Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District and Member of the Committee. Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District. We're also joined by Jeff Amoros representing Mayor Jack Young. To my immediate right is Marguerite Kern, Staff to the Committee. We're joined by Michael Huber, Council President Scott's Chief of Staff, Kimberly Rubens, and Rebecca Tab from Council President Scott's office. We have a presentation from BCPS, about forty or some odd pages. What we're gonna do is, I'm gonna turn it over to the Board Chair to kick things off. I believe you're gonna introduce Mr. Walker and Ms. Washington, I believe, and then we're gonna get to Dr. Santalisis for the presentation. Dr. S, I would ask that before you start your presentation, if you would introduce all of your staff that you have here with us. Cheryl, if you could please introduce any of the other Board Commissioners that are here.
I got it.
And then we will go from there. We're joined by Councilman John Bullock from the 9th District. Take it away.
Terrific. You can probably hear me, I'm not sure you can see me.
Oh, and please, anyone who's testifying, please be sure to speak into the mic, because this is being televised, so the folks will be able to hear you, but the folks at home won't be able to hear you.
Great. Thank you Chairman Costello, Council President Scott, Members of the Committee, and other Members of the City Council. I'm Cheryl Kishani, the Chair of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners, and on behalf of the entire school board, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this year's City Schools 2019-2020 Budget. I am joined today by fellow Board Members, Vice Chair Linda Chinia, and Commissioners Muriel Berkeley, Dr. James Hassan, and Vernon Reed. This year's budget process was, for the City School Board was, and City School District, was marked by an absence of drama. Last fall, we took a critical look at how we got input for past budget processes, and we decided to gather community input a lot earlier. This gave parents, community members, partners, advocates, the opportunity to hear directly from department heads early in their planning. Feedback from those meetings was reported to the Board and the public, and the staff used this input to establish budget priorities. Because over eighty percent of the budget is allocated at the school level, we emphasized the importance of participation in the school-based budget meetings, and we monitored those closely to assure that they were happening with integrity. While we know that not all schools get this right, we're confident that a very high percentage of our school leaders manage these processes well. Dr. Santalisis and Mr. Walker are gonna provide you with budget details. I want to emphasize four things about this year's budget. One, it is built on a strong foundation of successes which we have been experiencing over the past three years under Dr. Santalisis' leadership. We have amazing staff, working with our students and families every day, and delivering on the promise of a high-quality education. We also know very well that we have much more to do so that every child can reap the benefits of that promise, but the key trends are positive. Two, this budget is a reflection of the Board and staff commitment to equitable access to a high-quality education. As you will hear, we continue to expand access to advanced academic programs into previously underserved areas of the city, focus on the whole child, and make data-driven investment decisions with our Community Conditions Index Tool, which you'll hear more about. Three, it makes clear that we continue to pursue our goals and make strategic investments at the same time that we know our overall resources are inadequate. We have been clear about the resources we need to provide a world-class education for every student, and I'm gonna reference the World Class Education Document. This document's gotten some national acclaim as one of the few districts that actually has tried to answer the question, what does it actually take to educate? If you were starting from the ground up, what would it take? This is a very important document. I would encourage you to take a close look at it. We feel urgency every day to provide our students with what they deserve, so we work hard to provide every student with a high-quality education in spite of resource constraints. Some things to note, the three-year bridge to Kerwin, which included additional funds from the city and the state, has been helpful in stabilizing our budget processes, and we thank you for that. We have been good stewards of these funds, but the needs continue. Funding from this year's initial Kerwin legislation was categorical, and while helpful in some areas, it stopped short of addressing the funding formula which is critical. And finally, the budget is a clear reflection of our priorities. We firmly believe that the budget of any organization, whether it is the city, the school system, a company, or a nonprofit, is a public manifestation of its values. The school board and staff take that very seriously, so when we articulate our priorities, you will be able to see the corresponding budget allocations. And last, I want to thank you for the opportunity to work with many of you during my six years on the school board, including my past two years as Board Chair. It has been my distinct honor and pleasure to serve. I now want to introduce Dr. Santalisis, who will present the details of the budget, and I look forward to responding to any questions.
Madam Chairwoman, I just want to thank you for your service on the school board these past six years. It's been, it's just been great to have you there with your steady leadership, and how much you care about our kids and our schools and our teachers, so thank you very much. We're really gonna miss you.
Good evening, City Council. It is actually really great to be here tonight, to be able to share with you just directionally where we've come as city schools, and so thank you for this opportunity. Also, I would like to, as requested by Councilwoman Costello, to introduce the staff in addition to our commissioners that are here. So with us, we have Chief of Staff Allison Perkins Cohen, we have Chief John Walker, Chief Financial Officer, we have Chief Operating Officer, Dr. Lynette Washington, we have our Chief Human Capital Officer, Jeremy Grant Skinner, we have our Chief of Family and Engagement, Family Community Engagement and Communications, Chief Heike Hubbard, and we have with us our amazing legislative team, Dewanna Starette and Melissa Brum.
Great. Well, thank you very much, and I will begin with saying a thank you. As Board Chair Kishani pointed out, when we came to you two years ago, we had $130 million budget gap. You helped us secure a three-year commitment of bridge funding at about the equivalent of $60 million a year. We knew we wanted to invest those funds strategically with the ultimate goal of improving outcomes for our city's students. I want to highlight today some of the specific things we've been able to do thanks to your leadership and commitment. Our blueprint for success was introduced at the beginning of the 2017-18 school year. The work falls under three pillars, just by way of quick reminder, leadership, literacy, and wholeness. There's a two-pronged approach to that blueprint work. All schools received some supports, while intensive learning sites focused on literacy, social-emotional learning, and restorative practices dive deeper into the work and pilot strategies we hope to use in all our schools over time. We're also very proud of the support that we have been able to garner from local and national partners. We are the only school district in the nation to receive the largest grant that the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation provides, to the tune of $11.2 million. We also have resources that we have attained based on the compelling direction of our strategic blueprint. You can see some of the local funders here that have, and partners, that have also joined along in our efforts. One of the things I think it's important to realize as we get into a discussion of strategic and responsible use of city dollars within city schools is that we have maximized our funding, and approximately eighty-two percent of district funds go to schools. They're either budgeted centrally for school support, or go directly to schools within their budgets. I'd also like to point out that despite some narratives a couple of years ago about a quote "bloated" central office, I'm pleased to report that actually Baltimore City Public Schools is tied with Queens and County for the lowest rate of non-instructional central staff in the state. Also, I think it's important to know how and the frame that we use within city schools to strategically prioritize our resources. We began the summer of my first year by mapping based on a number of different factors. We call it our Equity Mapping, our Community Conditions Index. As a district, we began first looking at the history of redlining within our city, and what we did was we made our own Community Conditions Index map based on historical under-resourcing of particular communities. We now use that map really to guide and direct ourselves to make sure that we are disrupting traditional patterns of under-resourcing of particular communities, and basically this becomes our mirror by which we examine our own investments. A great example of that you'll see is with our intensive learning sites for wholeness. One of the things that we have done that we demonstrate in this map is you'll see that what we've tried to do is make sure, the red sections, by the way, represent the most historically under-resourced areas within our city, orange being the next lowest, to light green, and dark green representing those communities that have traditionally been well-resourced within the city. What I'd like to point out here is that what you'll see is that our investment in intensive learning sites is geographically diverse with regards to where in the city those investments lie. We try to gauge our low and high investment areas, and in addition to all of that, we're happy that we are also, we have brought on board, in large part due to the Board's long-term commitment to equity, our first Director of Equity for Baltimore City Public Schools that will help us deepen this work and the work with regards to staff capacity to actually provide equitable teaching and learning experiences for our young people. You'll also see, one of the things, and this is just an example, one of the things, again, you'll see is that in our expansion of gifted and advanced learning sites, this is another place where we made a deliberate attempt to strategically invest dollars in those sections of the city, where previously it was thought that there were less young people who would be identified as gifted and advanced learners. Lo and behold, hopefully to no one's surprise here, certainly not to our surprise, what we have found is that when we actually invest in placing gifted and advanced learning sites in the sections of the city where previously they were either nonexistent or were hard to discover, lo and behold, we have large numbers of young people throughout the city in every ZIP code, yes, I do, who qualify for this kind of enriched educational opportunity. We're very proud of the teaching and learning team that has done this. We are also proud of the fact that we have increased by fifty-two percent the number of middle schoolers in Baltimore City who have access to Algebra I study in middle school. For those of you who might not know, Algebra I in the middle school is a major gatekeeper course. When we did an analysis across the city, those programs were inequitably distributed. You'll notice by this map that a lot of the expansion, we directed Title I dollars, some of our local dollars, to making sure that, you'll see the expansion took place primarily in the red and orange sections of the city to make sure we're expanding access. And I'm trying to keep track of my counter, because I promised Councilman Costello that I would keep to that. The other piece on this slide that we are very proud of is the trajectory of growth. I will not stand before you today and say we are where we want to be or where we should be, but what we are seeing, and what has been acknowledged not only nationally but locally, is that we have a number of schools where the trajectory of growth is increasing. If any of you are interested in those schools, we can certainly get you the detail, but the most important piece is that we have schools that have attained gains of five percentage points or more on the PARC assessment for a total number of forty-four schools, and that is just within the last two and a half years. So what this means is, one, we are looking at growth, but we are also looking at where are our schools that are hitting that trajectory. So we have examples, for example, like Charles Carroll Barrister Elementary, as well as Affia Public Charter School are part of that list of schools that have experienced significant growth with regards to student performance. So while we know that student testing certainly is not everything, it actually is a large part of how we tell directionally where we're going, and forty-four schools making that kind of growth means we're on the right track. We're also, we're also proud of the fact that some of these schools on the move, these are schools, by the way, that over a three-year trajectory have exceeded the national average for growth within particular areas, which you'll notice, again, within our Equity Map, is we still have a ways to go in making sure that we have more of these high-growth schools represented in those areas of the city that have traditionally been under-invested. So while we're proud of our investment, we also recognize we still have a ways to go. We're also proud of the fact that we have continued over the last three years on a trajectory of increasing graduation rates. The class of 2018, can't wait, and we know numbers of you have been part of this year's graduations, and we thank you for that, but even as of 2018, you'll notice we've had probably one of the largest gains in graduation rates that we've had as a district. I want to highlight this Be More Me work because we've been, again, nationally recognized for some of our curriculum work and actually changing what young people learn every day, but we also know, one, as part of our Equity work, but also part of connecting young people to their community, the Christian Science Monitor, if you don't get a chance, make sure you do, today came out with an article highlighting our work in middle school with our Be More Me Project. This is centered in young people in city schools getting out into the city, learning Baltimore's history, learning their place in it as a way, frankly, of countering what can oftentimes seem like only a negative narrative in the press. Our Be More Me curriculum is being recognized for actually building on the strengths of young people, the strengths of the history of our city, and connecting our young people to that history. We've also prioritized community voice along the way. You'll see some of the major areas that we've launched over the last two to three years, everything from a fatherhood summit, my regular conversations with the CEO that I have throughout the city, all the way to the work around black teacher retention and recruitment, and our transportation work group. One of the things that I think is very important to point out is that with joint leadership with our Board, we are opening up what had previously been a shut-people-out kind of culture within city schools. Happy to report that, for example, in our Operations Advisory Group, we have top leaders throughout a number of construction firms, operations firms within the city. I will, and I know Dr. Washington could expound further, but one of the things that we did when we invited those folks in, they would say very admittedly that they thought, oh, great, we're gonna tell city schools how to improve their operations, we know that there's this narrative of incompetence. What we found, when they joined us and came alongside our team, the narrative flipped a hundred and eighty degrees, so instead, we have people from firms like Bezuto and Sagamore coming in and saying, we don't know how you do what you do with how little you have. So it's actually been the direct opposite, and as we invite people in, the same has been said from the transportation work group through the state, where we often have sometimes gotten kind of pushed on. When they come in and join with us, the refrain is still the same, that based on what you have, we can't believe you do what you do as well as you do. You'll see some of our ways, again, we know many of you got calls about where we are with our buildings, we know that we are underfunded in those areas, but the things that we are also very proud of, that Dr. Washington can expound on, is we have done a much better job in terms of making sure that we have remote review of buildings using technology, far more efficient deployment of our staff, particularly for preventive maintenance. So one of the things, before I turn it over to Mr. Walker, that I think is important to reiterate, that Board Chair Kishani said, is that the way we have engaged conversations as city schools is really looking at our budget as a statement of our values. One of the examples I use all the time is that you should be able to take, if you were to take my family's checkbook or bank statement, you would be able to see what my family values. You would know where we spend our money, where we place our time, and the city school's budget, and frankly, any budget, is no different. So what you will see with regards to our priorities as you walk through our budget are things, for example, like nurturing social and emotional learning. So we have doubled the number of intensive learning sites and continued professional development for social-emotional learning. We've increased the interventions in that area, promoting positive behavior and building strong communities. We've expanded mental health and substance abuse supports in schools. In terms of access to a well-rounded education, we have a twenty percent increase in the number of arts-certified teachers and an expansion, again, of the algebra that we talked about, our examples. We've built partnerships that connect school, students, and families, and then finally, building teacher capacity and content expertise. Again, we have done all of this, you can read some of the details and the highlights, but we've done all of this, frankly, with no significant additional dollars. This has all been the reprioritization of dollars, the streamlining of resources. You'll see in the blueprint implementation, what you can, what you'll see is that as we move forward, we'll increase the number of student-wholeness sites, increase the number of literacy sites, and it'll bring to the total, in terms of what we are actually, in terms of schools that are being touched by this, to approximately ninety-six schools within city schools will now have some kind of intensive learning site. We're also proud of the work we've been doing with leadership, again, our focus on recruiting and retaining African-American teachers, and our District Office Fellowship Program are wonderful examples in that area. And I am just at fifteen minutes and thirty-three seconds. As I promised, Councilman Costello, I will turn it over now to Chief Walker.
Thank you, Dr. Santalisis.
I'm John Walker, Interim Chief Financial Officer for Baltimore City Schools, and I'm gonna take you through a high-level summary of the proposed budget for fiscal year 20. I do want to throw in one caveat that we brought up last week, and that is the fact that, as most of you are aware, or all of you are aware, there was legislation passed on the last day of the legislative session that brings some additional Kerwin dollars to the district for fiscal year 20. However, those, those funds are very categorical, and we're still at this time trying to tease apart how we can best use those funds, and because they came at the last minute, they are not included in the budget proposal that we have now. The plan that we have in place is that we will come back in July to our Board for a supplemental appropriation, where we will, we will show these funds and how we're gonna use them, and also, we should be able to reduce our reliance on fund balance, which is something that we had to rely on in this particular budget, because we didn't know what the, what the state outcomes were gonna be at the time. So if we go through revenue, this just shows, shows you the changes in funded enrollment over the past five years, and as you can see, the enrollment in city schools has gone down each year over the past five years. Both state funding formula and, to a lesser extent, the city funding formula is based on, on our funded enrollment, and as our funded enrollment goes down, then technically we have less dollars to be able to, to deal with. In fiscal year eighteen, or here in the legislative session of eighteen, as you know, the bridge to Kerwin was passed, which would help us through a few years of getting through with this, with this revenue stream, but the revenue stream has still been flat. We haven't gotten any additional revenue over this period of time, and in a rising-cost atmosphere, flat is less. So we just throw that out there. Our total revenue allocation proposed for fiscal year 2020 is 1.322 billion. Of that, the major portion is our general fund at 1.162 billion. We have special categorical grant funds of approximately 105 million, and then our enterprise fund, which is our food and nutrition, or cafeteria fund, at approximately 55.3 million. The next slide, we just break down our general fund revenue by, by source, and the overwhelming majority of our revenue at city schools comes from the state of Maryland and the city. And as you will see, our revenue from the state is flat from fiscal nineteen to twenty, and from the city, it's flat from fiscal nineteen to twenty. The only other big change here is we have a little bit of a decrease in federal E-rate revenue, and that's what this is, federal E-rate for less reimbursable projects in fiscal year twenty. The only other thing I'll point out, as I said, is we're, at this particular time when we prepared this budget, we had an estimated $22 million that we would need to draw from fund balance. We don't expect that we are gonna have to draw that amount, but we will, we will come forward with that when we do our supplemental in July. This next slide just gives you a breakdown of all the different funding formulas within the state funding formula, and the three that I would, would point at are a little more than halfway down the page. You see, there's a declining enrollment grant, and there's a supplemental pre-kindergarten grant. Those are additional dollars that we've received as part of the legislative bridge to Kerwin funding in calendar eighteen. And then we also got a whole harmless adjustment. Because our enrollment has been gone down, going down technically, even with that, with the declining enrollment grant trying to flatten out our revenue decrease, our revenue would have decreased from the state over the past two years, and what the governor's budget did is added an additional $11 million in revenue so that we would at least be held flat for that period of time. This, this next slide gives you, gives you a summary of our $105 million for, for our special or grant funds, and as you can see, almost seventy-five percent of our federal grants come from either Title I, which is for disadvantaged students, or IDEA, which is for students with disabilities. This next slide just gives you a, a little historical look at what our Title I, Title I has been over the past five years, and you'll see that the revenue has gone up, it's gone to schools, but you'll also see that the number of Title I schools has gone down, and that's in many cases because we have changed the way we allocate Title I schools, because we wanted to give more money to those schools most in need, so we changed the formula a little bit so we could send more money to, to less schools for Title I. This next slide just shows the remaining, the remaining funds. You have the enterprise fund or the cafeteria fund, 55 million, and then the fund balance contribution of 22 million. Now, if we get into the allocations, our general fund allocation overall is 1.162 billion. Of that, 780 million dollars goes directly to schools, and another 382 million is centrally budgeted allocations, and we have a slide later on where we'll break that down and show you what that comprises. I think as Chairman, Chairwoman Kishani said, we did a lot of work this year to try to get out into the community at the beginning of the budget process, so that members of the community and stakeholders had more of an opportunity to address school leaders before they actually got their budget allocations and before they actually prepared their budget. And this just gives you a little bit of an idea of the process that we went through this year to try to get as much community input and stakeholder ideas as we could in preparation of school budgets. This next slide shows the allocations to city schools. We use a formula in city schools to allocate our funding to each individual school, and which, which you'll see is, of the 780 million, 333 million dollars of that was allocated through our traditional school formula. 311 million dollars of it was the, the basic per pupil, and then there was another 35 million dollars of weighted funding, and we wait for concentrated poverty, we wait for poverty, we wait for, a little bit for ELL, those sorts of things, so there are additional allocations added for those processes. The locked funding of 215 million, the 93 million dollars that we have in locked funding for our general education is for things like principals and career technology education teachers, ELL teachers, those kinds of things where we actually lock the funding to the, to the school. The 122 million dollars is for students with disabilities that we lock that. We don't give that out to schools to flexibly use as they want, it's locked down. We, 138 million dollars was allocated to charter schools. We had a We had another unlocked or a little bit more flexible student with disability dollars of approximately 76 million. We allocated another 15.7 million to our alternative option programs in schools. And then we had 2.4 million of targeted funding. We have a few schools that have leases, and then we have some ID programs and some other things that we give some targeted funding to, and that's with the 2.4 million, for a total of $788 million that goes directly to schools. This gives you a little bit of an idea of the base per pupil change from fiscal year 18 to '20, and the way we do things at city schools is we actually, we have an enrollment number, because we allocate based on enrollment. We have an enrollment number when we do our adopted budget, and then when we get our September 30th official enrollment, then we go back and we reallocate based on the actual number of students we have. So what you'll see here is, it was, for the traditional schools, it was $5,416 when we did the budget in fiscal year 18, and then the final allocation, because there are a few less students than what we had anticipated, we were able to allocate 5,462. And you see the same for '19, and for fiscal year 20, we're proposing $5,590 per pupil in base funding. On the charter school side, it's the same process. We go through the same thing. You'll see fiscal year 18 and '19, and proposed for fiscal year 20 is $9,108 per pupil. This next slide just gives you an idea of how our general fund budget is allocated, and I think you saw a slide early in the presentation, but approximately 82% of our budget goes either directly to schools or is budgeted centrally in support of schools. And you'll see that second little green area there where it says 15% for school support, well, we broke that down, and these are the things that 15% makes up. I mean, 25% of it goes to transportation. You see utilities, we have academic contracts, we have non-centralized operation contracts, facilities, maintenance, and all those sorts of things that are done on behalf of schools or in schools but are not budgeted in schools. And again, I'll bring up, there's OKLA and non-public, there are non-public placements that we make that are normally court ordered. And the last slide that I have to show you, it just gives you a little bit of an idea of how our district office staff is deployed. If you look on the far right-hand side, you see we have about 1,200 positions in our central office, but when we go back and start to break them down, we find that 400, or more than 400 of those positions are fully either in schools or in the field, and another 180 of them are either, or 80% or more of their time is spent either in schools or in the field. So the percentage of our central positions that actually spend less than 80% of their time either in school or in the field is only about 600 and a little over 600. And that completes my portion, and I turn it over to Dr. Washington to talk a little bit about school facilities. Thank you.
I'm Lynette Washington. I am the interim chief operating officer for city schools. And so for facilities, for the next couple of slides, I'm basically going to highlight two of our major funding sources for new construction and also for minor renovation for our schools. The first one is the 21st Century Building Program, and so, back in 2013, there was a House Bill 860 that provided for this partnership between the city, the state, and also city schools, where we leveraged about $60 million for about $1 billion to build about 26 to 28 schools. And so this is just an overview for where we are within that program. We have about nine of our schools that have been completed and occupied, so beautiful spaces for our students. We have five more schools that are going to open up between 2019 and 2020. So at the beginning of the school year, we're going to have two schools that open. We have about 11 projects that are in some stage of design, and then about three projects that are in pre-design, so they haven't entered the full design process. We have a stats committee that records how many local hires, so we have about 711 local hires through the nine completed schools, and then we have an unofficial number of about 258. And so, in general, we can say that about, at the end of the program, at the end of the building program, about 14,000 students across the city will be impacted, about new facilities. The next funding source is our capital improvement plan. So this plan is a plan where the state provides funding to local school systems for construction. And so it's different types of construction. It's the major renovation, construction that's happening, again, under the 21st Century Plan, but also, most of Baltimore City's portfolio are systemic projects, and so systemic projects are defined by the fire, safety projects, window doors, roof projects. Those are systemic projects. Every year, we receive about $25 million. At the state level, they give out about $280 million across all LEAs. I will say that we were a little bit disappointed this year, because the funding across for all LEAs was actually cut by 28 million. And so what you can see here is that Baltimore City, we are receiving at the 100% allocation about 26 million for our renovation projects, but we would lose about 2.8 million because of the total cut that happened across the state. The 28 million was actually given to other school systems that had overcrowding that was occurring within their school system, so Baltimore City were experiencing decline, so we lost that money. What we had to do in order to cover some of our other projects and fully fund them is that we had to go into a contingency pot to get about 2.8 million. The local contribution, which is the city's contribution, is about 19 million, so previously it had been flat for a couple of years at 17 million, and then there recently was an increase of 19 million. So the way that these funds are spent is that most of the money is going towards a local match to the state dollar, so for every state dollar, we get about 3%, well, 7% of local dollar goes towards the hard construction costs. There are going to be changes at the state level where they're looking at income and a number of different factors to make a determination about how much cities are eligible, local school systems are eligible for funding. So because of the way that Baltimore City looks on the books, they're going to increase our contribution, our local contribution is going to have to increase to 9%. So within the next coming years, instead of us contributing about 7% to a hard construction cost, we're going to increase that to 9%, which means probably fewer projects. The other way that we use these funds is that sometimes when we're merging schools, we use this to do some construction projects. We're also doing AC projects across the city and a lot of our schools, and the state does not fund projects in buildings that are underutilized, so we're going to be using some of our local funds to actually cover some of those projects, and again, for any unforeseen projects.
Also, I was, so thank you, Dr. Washington and Chief Walker. I was also remiss earlier. I don't know how I could have forgotten her, given she is one of my right hands, but also with us is Dr. Jenny Wu, who is my special assistant, so I wanted to make sure I did that way for you. So I know that we are ready for questions. I just want to highlight a few other things with regards to, there's one slide here for the legislative highlights. Clearly, if any city council members have questions about that, we are happy to review that. Also, I want to reiterate what Chairwoman Kashani pointed out. When we get asked the question, what do you need? What does a high-quality education look like for Baltimore City students? We proudly refer to our investing in our future. I will also say that while I am proud of the fact that we have continued to move ahead, continue to make strides within our school district, I do want to be very clear with the city council that every single day, we have to make hard decisions. We make hard decisions about, for example, do we pay for more guidance counselors or more mental health professionals? We know that every child wants field trips, but what about having a school play? We have the need for an air conditioner in one legislative district school, or do we fund a roof in another legislative district school? So I want to make sure that while we are being good stewards of the money, while we are frankly proud of the direction we're moving, it does mean that there is work that is not being done, that there are experiences that our young people are not having. I will also point out briefly that the evidence for the inadequacy of funding of Baltimore City public schools has been done, not only relative to other districts within the state, but has also been picked up by a number of school funding advocacy groups nationwide. So both across the state and nationwide, there is a wide acknowledgement that Baltimore City within the state of Maryland is not equitably funded. I would also say, as we opened with saying thank you for your support and advocacy with regard to Bridge to Kerwin, Bridge to Kerwin is set to expire next year. And as you see here, we have services and cash that have been given as a result of our city, all of you sitting here, the mayor's office, but that is set to expire next year. If it is not renewed, and people often ask what will happen, we will be back where we were. So I just want to be real clear about that, so you can ask more questions, but the bottom line, top overview is, if that money goes away, we go back to facing some of the same challenges we had previously. And then finally, I think it's important to point out where our city stands with regards to the state, and I go back and close with the fact that for us, a budget is a moral document. It says what you believe is the most important. And if you look across our state, Baltimore City contributes the lowest portion of our budget to education, 13%. Now, that is frankly, when it's compared to even other high-poverty districts, you'll notice that in Somerset County, Somerset County also is considered a high-poverty district, they devote 64% of their local budget to schools. If you look at our neighbor in Baltimore County, 51% of their local budget goes to schools. So while we all know we are not a high-tax, high-income district, we acknowledge that, percentages matter. Percentages matter in terms of what we communicate, and so the fact that even with a small budget, only 13% of the money from our city goes to education speaks volumes across the state about what we locally find most important. So I do just want to, again, wanted to end with that, so that we're all clear that even though the board and I will continue to lead, we cannot expect the same pace of investment. When I get calls ever so professionally from everyone across about why a particular school doesn't have X or Y, I want us to just all be on the same page about where we are currently with our investment compared to not only other states, but also other jurisdictions within the state of Maryland. And so with that, I will end and turn it over, turn it back to Councilman Costello for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Dr. Santelisa. We're going to start with Council President Scott. Before we begin, colleagues, there are about 11 of us here right now, so I would ask that we keep it to two questions apiece and try and ask our questions as briefly as possible, and hopefully, we can cycle through the entire council a couple times. Council President Scott?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you, Madam CEO, for being here, and I'm actually glad that you ended on this slide, because I was going to ask some questions first, but I want to start with just saying that I appreciate all the work that you guys do at city schools. We understand the challenges that we face, and I just wanted to be clear for my colleagues, but most, more importantly, for the listening public, that this slide has to change, right? We have to change this slide. We can no longer continue to fund our system the way we have. We know that it's unacceptable. We know that's inadequate. The city has to understand that we know changes are coming with Kerwin and other things, and we have to put in more dollars, and that means that we're going to have to be frugal, and we're going to have to make tough choices in other agencies, including some who get the lion's share of the city's budget. But Baltimore has to change the way we spend our dollars and we budget. We have to invest in our public education in Baltimore if we want to see a true and generational change in our city. So just know that you will have a partner in myself, and I know that I speak with my colleagues, as well as figuring out how we do that, how we begin to change that number and move it in the other direction. We will do that in a fiscally responsible way. We will do that in a way that understands the city that we all, that we live in, but the question is no longer a question if we're going to do it or when we're going to do it. We have to do it now. The only question that remains is, how do we do it? And we look forward to working with you guys to make sure that that happens. And in that vein...
Thank you, Council President. That means a lot.
My first question to you, ma'am, is, if we know, what will the fiscal impact be on the city and the school system if the Kerwin legislation is not passed next session?
That's a great question. So part of what we do know is that what we have currently been allotted, while it is, you know, clearly a significant amount, a lot of it is actually categorical. So what it will mean for our bottom line with regards to actual general dollars that will go to schools, it will mean that there won't be that much movement, to be frank, because where we sit now, and we're still waiting for the details from the legislature, but for example, some of that state money is earmarked that we must pay for community school coordinators, while that's fine, and while we know that our board and our district has a commitment, and so we welcome that, we also know that a community school coordinator does not make up, for example, for the need for a fine arts teacher or a full-time PE teacher. So where we are now is we're still combing through some of what that legislation means. We are actually very concerned and would really welcome the advocacy of the city council in really trying to get Kerwin to continue to be prioritized at the state level, but it does mean that we will still have gaps and we'll be functioning at that level, and that doesn't even include, quite frankly, the collective bargaining that we're entering in right now.
So I think, thank you for that. I think the sooner that we all can get that information, the better, and Mr. Sinteme, for you, just a quick question to you. Have you guys been talking and communicating with the school system about this and how the impact would be to them, but also, more importantly, to the city from a budgetary perspective as well?
So a couple things. First, on the bridge funding, we have been, it's, from our perspective, it's bridge funding. So the idea of the bridge funding is to give the schools the time to get ready for the next phase of their development, and so we've been funding a lion's share of these costs through fund balance. We can't maintain that on a recurrent basis, and so in the fiscal '20 budget, we're utilizing $21 million from fund balance, and that is gone at the end of next year, because we're out of the money that we've set aside for that purpose. So we share that concern. I mean, obviously, Kerwin is supposed to come up with more money, and they haven't considered the local funding formulas. We expect that to shake out in next year's session, but that's something that we're concerned about, and we have expressed that to the schools. I did want to point out something. To be fair, I think this slide is very misleading, because this is a comparison of the local spending as compared to the entire budget. We have to remember that the city has the utilities in its budget, and it has grant funds in its budget. Some of those other counties either do not have utility funds or do not have grant funds, or the level of grant funds that we get. I would just remind folks that the city has met or exceeded its requirements, its state requirements for maintenance of effort funding for at least a decade. Obviously, in the last three years, we've committed more even above that maintenance of effort, and those funding formulas are, of course, are based on enrollment and wealth characterization, so the state is supposed to contribute more money to the schools. So we have met our commitments on that. I think that's misleading, so I'd like to, you know, share some information with the council coming out of this about what we've done.
We understand that, but what we want you to understand, Mr. Sinteme, is that it's not going to change that much. We know that most of our money doesn't go towards our education system, and what we're saying is that we know that the city has a bunch of priorities that we have to meet, but we know that part of the Kerwin funding, however it's going to be laid out to us, is going to say that we have to put in more money. And what we should do is be proactive as a city and start thinking about and deciding how we're going to do that now, before they tell us, so that we can start and have those chains moving, so to speak, or that train on the track. But also, as we go forward with, as a city, we have to rethink the way that we're budgeting, so that no slide like this can ever be put to us, so we can say that in 2019, Baltimore finally woke up and said that, hey, once this Kerwin funding is laid out to everyone, the city said, we're going to figure out a way how to start to fully invest in education from a city perspective. We're not arguing with anything that you're saying. We know that we've been going over and above the funding as it exists. We know that we've been going over and above the funding as it, as it exists today, but we also know that the funding as it exists today is inadequate for, for what we're facing as a city, and we just have to all be creative, be tough, and we know that you are, we love you, you are very tough on the agencies to make sure that they're spinning dollars appropriately, but we're just all going to have to buckle up and understand that that's going to be a reality for us.
Yeah, so just to piggyback that, one thing we've done to try to prepare, and there is a little bit of uncertainty heading into fiscal twenty-one, that's a large reason why you saw in the fiscal twenty budget, for those who are here at the overview here, and there's so much capital investment, because that's one-time funding. So we strongly encouraged the mayor, going back to Mayor Pugh, when we were, we were building this budget, to put, because it was a good fiscal year for us, the last two years have been good to put a lot, as much of the money towards one-time purposes, which are much needed, of course, as well.
And I would also just point out that that does actually not include the one-time capital. So if we were to put a slide, and just respectfully, and I'm more than happy to sit down and...
I'm talking about our, our capital budget.
I understand, but what I, I want the city council, it's important for them to know that the dollars represented and the percentages here do not all include capital investment. So, so when you're looking at the proportion, if we were to put a slide at what the percentage and what the additional money is that each of these locales put into capital, it would be another slide. So that, that's my only point of clarification.
Sure.
Yes, I also wanted...
So, so can I, could I finish?
Yes, sir.
So, so, yeah, a lot of the planning going into fiscal twenty-one is to make sure that we're prepared, and that's just not schools issues, we have convention center expansion potentially coming, we're kind of riding a wave on the economy where we're at a, probably a high point or near a high point, which is why we've been very safe about setting aside money and fund balance, and, and having a rainy day fund, frankly, to, to, to protect us if we have any emergencies. On the capital side, I would just mention, you know, we have met and exceeded our, our contribution into the Twenty-First Century Schools program. We have three dedicated sources that go to that, so we have exceeded that to the point that we have actually contributed more, some of which has forfeited into that fund which goes towards additional school construction. So I feel like we've done a lot there over the last few years as well, or at least what we can afford.
Madam Chief.
So I wanted to clarify a couple of things. One is that in terms of the amount of resources, the bridge to Kerwin funding that we received in FY eighteen, that was a three-year bridge until Kerwin passed. But of course, it was not, it was never intended that we would then figure out how to figure out and make up the gap in those three years if that money went away. The intention was that Kerwin would pass, and, you know, there's a limit of how much control we have over that with the change in leadership on the House side, that, you know, it's just a hard bill to get passed in the best of circumstances, and, you know, I think the world of our new Speaker of the House, but it's a hard job, and to pass legislation in your first year of that magnitude is going to be challenging, so there's just, you know, questions about whether it will pass. We will have to set our budgets on schools in, before, and we know what happens in the General Assembly. So if we don't know whether the, whether the city council would continue its commitment that you made for those three years, absent a passage of Kerwin, it will be very hard to set school budgets. We would have to do what we did in FY eighteen, where we predicted very large reductions on, on the part of schools, where they had to make big cuts to schools that were incredibly disruptive to schools, very desmoralizing to staff, and then we'd have to go back and insert money if we got it later, but that's a very disruptive process we'd love to avoid. And then the last thing I would say is on the capital, some of the numbers to which Dr. Santalisis was referring to is that the amount that we get for local CIP dollars from the city is about nineteen million dollars. If you look at a Baltimore County or a Montgomery County, similar-sized jurisdictions, they're getting around one hundred and eighty-five or one hundred and ninety-five million dollars a year compared to our nineteen. So that, when we have the worst building portfolio in the state, it makes it very hard to keep our, we can't keep our buildings up, you know, up to the shape they should be in for our students.
Thank you, and we stand ready, like I said before, to figure out how we can move this forward, and, and change the narrative of how we're funding our schools. Can we go back to, this is something that's critically important to me, the equity slide? I'm sorry to make you flip all the way back through the equity slide.
Just tell me which...
It is number five.
Great. Whoops, and now we're stuck. Oh, there we go. There we go, yes, sir.
Great. I just want to figure out just a little deeper, and then, of course, I've known Dr. Durant most of my life, and she'll probably yell at me later for asking questions about her without her being here, but that'll be okay. But can you explain a little bit deeper, especially for my colleagues, what went into your equity policy, the factors, the, the scorecard, what the, the metrics are for you guys, so, so we can have a better understanding of what you, what you're doing? I know a little bit about that, but I think it'll be critically important for everyone to hear, because we, I will say first that I also appreciate you guys having this in your slide, we, of course, you guys are not, don't have to follow that law, but we passed my equity law last year, and we've been pressing on city agencies to start to do similar things. So we just want to hear from you a little bit of detail about that, and where the input came, and the goals for equity that you guys have laid out for this fiscal year.
Sure, no, and we, we actually are, are very proud of the fact that we're dovetailing with a lot of the work that we know the city is doing, that you've championed for a long time, and frankly, that our board has. So what this, and, and again, because we were trying to compress slides, and we have others that we can certainly forward to the city council, but generally, what we did was we first looked at, again, traditional redline maps to say, where do we know historically where there's been under-resourcing, and then we took, we, we started with a list of about thirty to thirty-five indicators through the BENEA mapping and reduced that down to about six to eight. So we took things like poverty rate, median household, acts, even things like access to a car, or access to healthy food, vacant properties, violent crime rates, and we took those figures, those current figures, and then came up with the, the index that you see there with the red, the orange, the light green, and the green, but we based a lot of those indicators on that, those initial BENEA indicators. That we did probably my first year. So we started that our, our first year, and literally just did our own input mapping like we showed you examples of, but we have other examples. I think where we are now, which is where the board, again, has championed for a while in bringing Dr. Durant on, I think the next stage of that work, is really saying, okay, we know investment-wise, we have a way of tracking. Now we're looking at how do we disrupt certain patterns, right, of behavior, right? So how are we, for example, equipping staff, right, to actually address the needs of young people, particularly, frankly, we have, and you know this as well, we have a large African-American population, we don't deal directly with what being an African-American, not only in Baltimore, but in this country, has met, meant for how young people experience schooling? What are the practices within schools that continue to exclude? Dr. Durant has done kind of an initial survey of schools, and I will tell you, every school she visits wants her to stay and do some training. We have committed to making, to making sure she can build up her staff very similarly, so she'll be adding at least one full-time staff member this year to help with training. At my CEO Institute, which is traditionally the launch to go back to school, will, will launch some of the equity training for staff to actually complement this view of investment. So it's really a combination of those things, both investments as well as just frankly, attitude and practices that we're seeing, that we're hearing from young people with regards to just their interaction with adults. And, by the way, you know, the other piece is we're looking at our choice process, because we had a review of choice, and while we love choice, we believe in choice, our choice is not equitable. And so part of what Dr. Durant is going to be leading us in is how do we become even more refined in how we look at those processes through an equity lens? Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Santalisis, can you talk to me about what's going on in terms of climate control in our school facilities, and specifically whether or not we have a schedule, a timeframe, and really cost for upgrading all the HVAC systems?
Yes, I could, but given that Dr. Washington is here, I think it'll be better and more streamlined if she gives you a quicker streamline on where we are with that. We do have a plan.
Absolutely, and Dr. Washington, I'm going to make a request immediately after, so if you could just give me kind of the two-minute overview of, of where things are at and where we're headed.
Okay, and so, right now, we have about fifty-seven of our schools that are still remaining to, to be, have AC. We have a couple of schools that are under construction right now, we have about three schools that are under construction, about six additional projects. So I just say, just overall, we've, for this year, we'll probably put about twenty million into our HVAC project. And when we say HVAC, it's not a full HVAC program, it's vertical package units that are supporting classrooms. So your support spaces won't have AC, your, you know, lobbies and some of those different things like that, these are only vertical package units, a unit that is a single unit to support a particular classroom. So we are going to spend about twenty million left to be, to be awarded, is about forty-five million to complete the entire program.
Great. Could you provide, Council Jeff, this is fourteen or fifteen?
This should be fourteen, unless you'd like to count this as fourteen, and then...
Councilman Henry's is fourteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, this is thirteen, so...
Thirteen, Councilman Henry, so request number fourteen is, we're counting all the agencies in here, so we haven't asked for much, but can you provide the schedule and a listing of each of the schools, what's been done, what's in process, what still needs to get done?
So we can provide that information.
I just want to clarify, are we talking about just with regards to air conditioning or CIP projects?
Uh, no, just air, air conditioning and/or any, any heating issues.
Any heating issues as well?
Yeah, I mean, if, I know we had a couple of reports from the winter, last winter, but...
We can do that.
Anyone who's getting an upgrade of HVAC-type upgrade, yeah. Dr. Santalisis, can you talk about enrollment forecasts, specifically, you know, if we have them, what they're showing, what our plans are to deal with them?
Yes, no, and, and actually, we would be happy to forward also to the council a presentation that Dr. Nicole Stewart did at our most recent school board meeting, really dealing with this issue. One of the things that we are tracking very closely, in addition to the major driver for our projection, which is birth rates, is also looking at the number of families staying in Baltimore City. So we have a projection, I mean, so one of the things I will say, which isn't fantastic news, in terms of what we'd like to be able to say, is we have two-hundred-plus more students coming in each year, but what we are seeing is that there is at least not as steep a decline as the decline we predicted. What that still means, though, is that we are, we are predicted to lose families based on the rate at which the city, I mean, we're, we're projected to lose students at the rate at which the city is losing families, and so that birth rate combines with, and will be exacerbated by whether there's a shift in the number of, of families that stay in Baltimore City, period. So we are still projecting overall declines in enrollment. What we have been working towards is actually steadying that, stopping, not necessarily, I would say ideally going in the other direction, but what we have been really focused on with the addition of chief high cupboard hiring, as well as the work that the enroll, you know, we did with enrollment, both with the community as well as with the Enrollment Task Force, is really doubling down on those factors that we can control, but overall, we still, we still have a projected decline. But I can get you the detail based on that presentation.
Great, and that presentation has the steps that the school district is taking to, to retain families and...
We, we do have some of that, and we can give you some of the initial steps we've worked on based on the recommendations.
That's perfect, we'll start with that. That'll be number fifteen, please. Jeff, Councilman Pinkett.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I know it's already been said, but I just want to reiterate how much we appreciate your leadership, Dr. Santalisis, and the board, as well as the entire team. We're fortunate to have you and your team in place.
Thank you.
Leading our, our school system.
Thank you.
So I just had, I just had a couple of questions. So the first was related to special needs. Can you, can you tell us, how are special needs funds allocated to the district, and then how are those funds then distributed to the schools?
No, great question. So with regards to, so let me say this is just kind of a grounding, we receive our money in a very kind of layperson's terms, based on the number of young people generally identified. The challenge is for us, we actually don't get enough to service all of those young people, so we take a significant portion of our general funds to make up the gap, so that even though we, we do receive dollars from the state, based on our young people that are identified, what we have found is that that's insufficient in terms of what the actual cost is. So is it about thirty million a year? We get eighty? So we get eighty million to, from all sources, including ourselves, correct? And then we make up the difference, including the federal and state, but then the remaining gap is about, how much do we put in of general funds? So it's about two-hundred-and-twenty million. So if you look at the gap, so if you look at that two-hundred-and-twenty million of general funds, that's funds that would be going either directly to schools through fair student funding, or could go other places, but we use that money, which is our regular general fund money, to put towards the education of our students with disabilities. Does that make sense?
It, it, so, but, so we get eighty million from all sources, but the need really is three-hundred million? Wow. And, and there's no, no other, I guess, formula, no other allocation? That, that's a significant...
Great question, and one of, well, I should say, great point, and I think it's a great point, because we've been advocating for that as well. So as part of the new Kerwin discussions and school funding discussions at the state level, we have been trying to advocate for more support around students with disabilities. How that might pan out in actuality, either in the new funding formula or future iterations of Kerwin, we don't know, but that same reaction that you just had is what we really have tried to kind of get on the ground with our legislators, both the city delegation and frankly, across the state, to get some more movement because of that large amount. Did you want to say something else?
Just one little thing, that in the money this year that we were receiving that will come back in a supplemental appropriation to the school board with, there is eight million dollars additional in special ed, but, you know...
No, and I'm, so I'm glad, obviously, advocacy for it is going, because, I mean, that two-hundred-and-twenty million dollars is, are resources, they're supposed to be going district-wide, and if, you know, not saying that those students don't need those resources, clearly they do, but there's got to be some other revenue, some other streams of, of resources in order to address such a great need.
And forthrightly, I would also just briefly add, that we also recognize that there absolutely are young people with identified disabilities that should be getting service through that channel. We also recognize, which is true for just about every urban school district I've worked with or in, in the entirety of my career, that there is still a percentage of students identified as having disabilities, that quite frankly, we're hoping our, our recognized literacy work that we've been engaged in the last two years will also help bring some of those numbers down, because what we know is that there are large numbers of young people that if they were serviced, if they actually could read well, right, would not be behavior challenges, would not then act out, would not then disengage from the learning process, and if they were, some of the work we're doing in wholeness, right, if they were actually engaged. So that's, clearly, there are young people with disabilities, but we also know that there is some percentage of those young people that if we taught them well the first time around, they actually would not need to be identified in the way that some of them are.
Okay, so we, we will definitely keep our eyes on that, and I hope that representatives from the state of Washington unite and realize how important an issue that is. We're only allowed two questions, so I'm hoping that one of my colleagues will ask about Title I, so I won't mention that.
Okay.
Hint, hint. But can, can you speak to, does this, does this, does the district calculate the number of students who receive Medicaid? And, and if so, how are those funds, I guess, associated with, you know, with students or allocated to the individual schools? Is, does Medicaid play a role in?
It's a good question, but I'm going to let Chief Perkins-Cohen answer that.
So Medicaid is not, we're, we, the way we count poverty is through the, we do direct certification, and under the state guidelines, Medicaid is not one of the, the poverty programs that, that is allowable to be counted at the state level. The federal government allows it, but Maryland does not. So we don't use it for that purposes. We do, we don't have the direct access to Medicaid data, but we do use Medicaid, we do third-party billing to get reimbursement for some of our special... do third-party billing to get reimbursement for some of our special ed costs, and that is through Medicaid. And John, you should correct me, or Chief Walker, you should correct me if I'm wrong on something here. In the past, we used to have access to data to match student information, to make sure that we were properly billing for Medicaid. That, I don't know why exactly, but that matching process stopped a few years ago, so we haven't had that access. So one thing we've been trying to get is access to that state information, so that we can more appropriately ensure that we're matching that Medicaid dataset, to make sure we're getting all the reimbursements to which we're entitled.
Right. So if that, if we could get that information, that's more resources that we could...
Fair enough.
Could, like you said, be reimbursed. Now, do the other districts throughout the state, do they, do they calculate Medicaid students? I mean, do they have the same difficulties that we have?
Yeah, that's a statewide issue. And it's statewide that Medicaid is not, one of the areas that's allowable to count under direct certification, and this matching issue is a statewide issue as well, because it's the state that would have to support them.
So, I mean, this sounds like something that all of the districts in the state should be working together to address, because those are resources that they're being...
Did you want to... The session they're planning to... I know there's something I can... Do you want to stand here? The Governor Relations Liaison. This session, because they understood that the Medicaid issue was so great, that they are planning a study with MSD and the Department of Health and Human Services, I think it's called something different now, to figure out a way to collaborate, so that we, all jurisdictions can receive this information.
And so that was my last question, but if, just please let us know, you know, even issues like that, you know, as it relates to, you know, the Medicaid or special needs, so that we can help advocate on the state level as well. I think that those are critical issues when we're talking about, you know, the limited resources that we're operating on.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for bringing that up, Councilman.
Middleton, followed by Cohen, Sneed, Stokes, and Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Slide 20, the General Fund Revenue Projection Breakdown. And I noticed that the city revenue for FY19 is going to be the same for FY20, and I just think that we must try to increase the pace with inflation and rising costs, and plus with the historic underfunding that we already have. And then looking down the slide underneath, we're losing federal revenue, so we really need to consider adding something to that, especially in light of our, what our president of the council has mentioned when he started off, of how we have to really work on this hard and fair, and we need to add something for FY20 with city revenue for the city school system.
So just, so just to clarify, the amount that they're showing is city revenue, that's considered like cash contribution, but what has been increasing over the last two years is we're providing in-kind services. So we've been waiving services that we typically bill the schools for. And all of that money includes, the money this year is 38 and a half million above what the baseline was three years ago, what was required at the time by law. So we're providing about $99 million over three years above baseline, using fiscal 17 as that baseline.
Okay. So would that increase the FY20?
So, you know, the 278 is the, I think of it as the cash contributions, but the city has also waived, is providing in-kind services to the schools that we're not billing them for, which is also, which is a help to the schools and a hurt for our budget.
Okay.
So things like nursing, MTA, those are kinds of things that the city is giving in-kind that is making up part of that bridge.
Okay.
So I would just say that 38 million, some of that is in cash, so that's, the 38 is not on top of that. So the services piece of that is, at least 10 million of it is in cash. So it's actually, it's not the full 38 that's in services, on top of that, it's 28, I think.
The bridge funding includes both cash and in-kind services. So the 99 million over three years includes both of those items.
Okay. And then I guess just a technical comment from, I guess, parents that call our offices. Occasionally, we get parents that would like a better plan for student concerns when a parent calls the main office, and if there's something that they really need to answer to immediately, the response time is not very good. And I don't know if there is a new plan that you're trying to work out to really help with student concerns. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure. No, 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 no. And I, you know, that feedback is helpful, so I'll just say quickly a couple of things. One, any council member, including yourself, should feel free to refer parents who don't think that they have been heard adequately at their school, to either the CEO on Budsman, who's in my office, or Karen Lawrence, or the Family and Community Engagement Office under Tina High Cupboard. I think the other piece you should know is, it is helpful to know which schools, because there's a pattern, right? It's not, and you know this as well, it's not every school, but it also helps us to identify which schools we need to target for additional training, additional support in this area, and just looping in supervisors. So sometimes it might be, to be frank, like an outlier family that on that day didn't feel met, but we also track very closely patterns. So if it continues to be the same school, and you all will know this as well as I do in terms, then that gives us a different set of information that would be helpful. But in the immediate, you can feel free to direct families who don't feel like they're being heard to either of those two places.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Santalises, and your team for the incredibly important work that you do. Wanted to start out by first congratulating you on the increase in graduation rates, I believe up 1.5%. And that is critically important, because we know that in 2019, if you don't have a high school diploma, you're in trouble.
That's right.
And so we congratulate you on that, and hope to continue to see an acceleration in that trend. Also wanted to lift up some of the good work that I think is being done, it doesn't get a lot of mention in the 100% Project.
Yes, it's wonderful.
And so while I know, you know, the jury is still not out, and the data and everything else, I think that's something that we as a council could do some work to lift up, because again, we talk about equity, you're taking some of the most historically underserved schools, and putting real talent and sustainable leadership and community coordinators and everything. And I think it's, from what I've seen so far, a beautiful thing to behold, and we should all do some work to celebrate that.
Thank you for that, by the way, for lifting that up, because I think it means even more when we have an elected official who also recognizes that work, because it really is work to be proud of. So thank you for that.
Absolutely. On the less good note...
I figured it was coming.
So I do want to talk about our ELL population, and some of the challenges specifically around funding that, to my colleague who's going to ask about Title I, one angle that I look at is, we know that some of our schools that serve majority ELL students have been pretty dramatically hit in funding. One in particular, John Rura, lost its Title I money, and I know, because I live very close to there, that school has not gotten any wealthier. It is serving very, very, very poor families.
Yes.
And so that is a huge challenge. And I know, I've talked to Melissa and Allison a bunch about this, and you as well, but how are we currently thinking about, because of the changes in the formula at both the federal and state level, equalizing funding, so that the schools and the kids that, under frankly, this administration have already been harmed a whole bunch, and are already dealing with a high degree of trauma from policies out of DC and everything else, don't further backslide because they're losing their Title I, or they're losing large amounts of funding? I'm just curious how currently you all are thinking about what a proxy or a metric is that could account for that loss of money?
No, so I will, at least on the proxy work, I will, you know, Chief Perkins Cohen has been doing the most ongoing work on that, so she can give a specific update on where we are with that. I would just say and point out two really important things. One, we do not disagree with you. And we actually were the ones that flagged it for the state, quite frankly. The state has been, in some ways, waiting for us to come up with something as well. But because of some of the, again, discussion we had around Medicaid and other things, the number of ways, we don't have a perfect way yet to have that proxy. So that's number one. We don't disagree with you, we're working on it feverishly. I walked past a group of those same principals the other day, who were coming out of an hour-plus meeting, trying to continue to work through it. So I just want to assure the city council, we see this as an issue and a challenge, too. The second piece I would say, and this gets into the issue of overall funding, what we have committed to do is, and we have done it, as soon as it was flagged for us, and we continue to do it, again, even with limited resources, we have taken general fund dollars to help make up the gap in federal Title I money that schools aren't getting. So for example, at John Rura, some of their actual school-based positions, that they would not have had the money in their Fair Student Funding allocation to fund, we funded those positions for them. So we remain committed to doing that. I go back to this theme of, our budget says where our priorities are, we did not have a lot to make up, but what we had, we really did work hard. Yes, it's insufficient, and yes, it needs to be more. But this is a challenge, and, you know, Chief Perkins Cohen can talk a little bit about it, but there's been this push to go back to the forms, right? Can't we just go back to counting kids through the forms? The challenge with that is, that to ramp up all of the infrastructure would take time again, and we would have, quite frankly, predictable decreases in our poverty rate while we ramped back up the ability across the district, not just in these schools, but in all of our schools to count. So right now, we're looking at some kind of hybrid that we might be able to do in terms of counting at some of our high ELL schools, to be able to demonstrate with more concrete information, that, for example, Rura's rate absolutely has not declined to 30%. We know that, you know that, I know that. So we're looking for ways to come up with proxies to be able to count what the actual rate is.
So just a, so just a little more background on that, we have been working very hard on this, because as Dr. Santalisa said, like you, we've been very concerned about this. So we've been very proactive in identifying solutions. In addition to what Dr. Santalisa said about general funds, we also have, so last year, we changed our Fair Student Funding Formula, and with the way we count poverty, with regards to that formula, we distribute resources based on poverty. And so the poverty, the way we count poverty for those funds includes any students who are directly certified, as well as any students who score a Level 1 or 2 on the WEDA exam, which is the English Language Proficiency Exam. So those are the two lowest levels of English Language Proficiency, our rationale being that those are most likely the families who are newest in the country and least likely to be on those directly certified programs. So it's another way to gauge that, the need of those students. This year, also in Title I dollars, because we've continued to see these schools, part of the challenge has been frankly, is that as we continue to identify solutions, the goalposts keep moving, because these schools, for the reasons that you talked about, in terms of the national landscape, these family, the schools that serve high numbers of English language learners or high immigrant populations, their poverty rate just keeps dropping. So we keep identifying one solution, and then we have to figure out another one, because the goalpost keeps changing. So this year, we also, with our Title I dollars, we use centralized Title I dollars to put additional resources in schools that had high numbers of English language learners to provide additional support to those students. So if their poverty rate is dropping, and they're receiving less Title I, even if they're receiving it, they're probably receiving less, because less students are counted, or because they've gone down a tier in terms of our funding level within Title I, then we're providing additional support through centralized dollars to make up for some of that under counting. And then I would say, the last thing we're doing that Dr. Santalisa's referenced is, we're working with Burke, our research partners at Burke, to develop a pilot for this year, where we would have a group of pilot schools, who we would collect forms for. Some of those would be the high EL schools, then there would be schools that, there are some schools who have dropped their poverty rate when we switched to direct cert in large numbers, similar to what you see in a high EL school, but they don't have high EL, and we're not sure why they drop. So we're going to probably include some of them in the study, too, to figure out what's going on there. And then some schools who haven't been as impacted, to try to get some comparison. And that would inform policy for Kerwin. So one thing we've been advocating at Kerwin is a higher multiplier rate for schools that, for English language learners, so that you have one multiplier rate for all students that aren't directly certified, but that for English language learners, there'd be a higher multiplier. One thing that's hard to tell right now is, what should the multiplier be? Because we don't kind of know the size of the hole we're trying to fill. So the pilot would help us get more information to inform that policy and advocate for that policy.
Okay. Please let us know what we can do to continue to support, particularly around, you know, just want to see, when we speak about equity, that it holds cross...
Absolutely.
...for language, as well as everything else.
Absolutely.
Second question on a not-so-great news story. The enrollment data continues to be a challenge, losing population, and I actually think, to connect the two, our immigrant population is our only increasing population in the system. I know that at one point, there was a task force, I believe led by the BTU, around increasing enrollment. But what are we specifically doing? Because, yes, we all absolutely have to step it up in funding, but we also have to have more kids...
Absolutely.
...choosing more families, electing to send their children to Baltimore City public schools. So what are we doing to increase those numbers?
No, and I, again, as I stated earlier, we're in agreement with that. I don't think we've kind of only made this about getting more. We've been, and the board has been very clear, that enrollment is one of the major ways that we can increase our funding. So I think the work from, that was gathered, both through our community feedback sessions, as well as the work from the Enrollment Task Force, one has us taking a look at, how do we do a better job? And this was part of the school board meeting presentation on enrollment. But one area of focus is, is how are we actually, frankly, attracting a larger share of young families? So you know, as a parent of a young child, right? When we look at the numbers of potential kindergarteners, one of the questions we're asking ourselves is, how do we increase the number of families that at least try city schools through pre-K or kindergarten? And that's one of our biggest untapped areas where we can increase, where we can increase enrollment. Another area that we've charted is, number one, when families, and this was, I think, the first year, if I remember correctly, where we didn't lose the largest number of families entering middle school. Part of our work focusing on middle school, expanding rigorous curricular options at middle school, part of the Be More Me engagement piece at middle schools, because we know too many families opt out of the system when they don't feel as if they have high-quality choices in middle grades. So we have been looking at, how do we increase the richness of our middle grades options? How do we make sure, for example, that we're doing a better job communicating that to families, both within just offerings and the equitable access to high-quality middle grades programs, which we still have a lot of work to do in that area? But also in the choice process, families saying, look, if I don't get my first or second choice, I don't feel like I have a third, not sure how to navigate the system. For example, in addition to, you know, for years, it was only the Ingenuity Program that was considered kind of a rigorous middle grades program. I will say Dennis Jutris and our Office of Gifted and Advanced Learning has done a wonderful job in really ramping up honors offerings at the middle grades level, which again, families want to see. And then quite frankly, I think when we talk about where we would spend additional funds, middle grades is, you know, and not to get too kind of psychological or whatever about it, but it's the second biggest period for human growth, right, in the life of a human being. And so in middle grades, in rich middle grades, you see things like band, instrumental music, you see sports offerings. Right now, we are doing all we can to make sure that our senior high schools have sports. We need to do more sports offerings at middle grades. That's what families want to see, and a lot of the... And a lot of the families that are opting out, it's because of, one, rigorous college preparatory, and frankly, career preparatory experiences. So we're pushing some of our career experiences for young people in middle grades, right, who might not necessarily want to go to four-year college, but want to be, want to explore trades that would still require community college or post-secondary. So that's an area. And then the third, I would say, is just customer service. Under the leadership of Chief Grant Skinner, we've done far more customer service training than we've ever done in my time in city schools, either previously or currently, because a lot of what families still tell me is, you know, when I go to, and Councilwoman Middleton was referencing this, when I go to a school, and it takes me three days to get somebody to call me back, and I'm interested in placing my child in pre-K or kindergarten, and I can't get a call back, that doesn't make me feel very welcome. We did extensive training for the first time with school secretaries, and I will say, they were one of the most sponge-like groups of, of city schools employees. They, they told us it was the first time for many of them in extensive careers in city schools that they had ever gotten any training. And a lot of that training was with interacting with public, how do you make people feel welcome? Those pieces make a difference. So I would say those are the three major buckets, but we have, we have a number of recommendations. And to your point, we're not just standing still and waiting for more money to come. We have to be able to keep families who start with us, and we need to attract families that we currently aren't.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Snead?
Thank you. I, we mentioned utilities earlier, and so I'm wondering, have we seen a, a big decrease with the new buildings and the old buildings?
That's a good, no, that's a great question. I'm going to turn that over to Chief Washington. I have a couple of comments I'd make on this, but I'm going to let her do that.
So just for clarity, when you say a difference between the new and the old buildings-
Because I imagine that our bills are very high for the old buildings, but I would imagine that for the newer buildings with energy-saving, anything they put in the school, it would make it a lot cheaper, but I don't know, and that's my question.
Right. So I would say that with the newer facilities, you have more sophisticated equipment that still requires. So our IT equipment is probably more than what we have in our, our older facilities. So a lot of that still requires the use of energy. So I can't, we are still looking at the data right now, but I can say that the newer facilities are, they're more efficient in terms of how the systems run, but I don't, but they still require the same amount of usage, in terms of energy usage, just because of the, the types of, of equipment. So I would just give an example, we had old boiler systems in our old facilities. In our new facilities, we have high-tech HVAC systems, and they require still a lot more energy and also resources in order to maintain.
I'm just going to add, too, that, yeah, part of it is the maintenance, because the, you know, we, we had not had a lot of resources to put into maintenance, and so under Dr. Washington's lead, we've really ramped up our maintenance. And so these are systems that are, they do require maintenance, so that's one thing. The other thing I would just remind you is that part of the challenge, too, is that some of the buildings that are being replaced didn't have air conditioning, and these systems do have air conditioning, so it's, so you have to parse out the fact that the utilities rate might not be cheaper, but you're also enhancing the students' learning environment in a way that they didn't have before.
Got it. Mice, thank you. The second question is, I'm wondering, how much time and resources do we spend to, for the kids that are not going to school? Are you guys still door-knocking? Don't you-
I'm sorry, that are not.
It's in, in school?
Oh.
So are you still doing a knock and drag?
Well, so, so before that, Councilwoman, I would just like to welcome Commissioners McFadden and Richardson, who have joined since we began the hearing. With regards to-
Pardon, can, can you stand?
Commissioners Richardson and McFadden?
Just so we know who you are? Okay, thank you. I apologize for interrupting.
No, 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 thank you. I apologize to Councilwoman Snead as well. So with regards to young people who aren't in school, I mean, this is, so I would say a couple of things for that. One, we have been partnering with a number of organizations that actually specialize in making connections with families around young people that are experiencing chronic absence, right? So some of that does include door-knocking. We have individual schools that are excellent at it, and I'm trying to think of the, the place I visited with, no. Hartford Heights? No, it was the other one. Hartford Heights does it. So we have examples. Hartford Heights is one that does it. There was one that I, I'm just blanking right now, that I went to visit with our state, you know, with Dr. Salmon, with Dr. Karen Salmon. And when she finished, she said, wow, we should have you all come and actually talk about how you help get young people to school and back to school, and they do a fabulous job. The problem is, or the challenge, I should say, is what we're working on is more of a systemic approach to chronic absence and not being so dependent on whether a school is good at it or not, whether a school goes out and recruits family, not recruits, but it sometimes is recruits, if you hear the stories, right? It is about people who know families can knock on the door and say, how can we help you get your student to school this morning? And so we're doing that, but part of what we've been working with the city on, actually, over the last couple of months, is what is our district-wide strategy for chronic absence look like, so that we're less dependent on just whether one school or the other is proficient in that. And so that's something that you can look for in, in the coming, in the coming weeks, but we've been working on that for a while.
For the older grades, do we, if they're not coming to school, do we just go to Plan B after a while and say, hey, there's a YO Center, or there's an alternative program somewhere for you, so it's, maybe you'll like that? Do we automatically go to that, towards that?
No, I don't think we automatically go, because the placement of students in alternative programs is a combination of more factors than just chronic absence. So in some young people's case, it is, they have completely dropped off the grid because they have had experience with the criminal justice system. And so their reentry might look different than a young person who, for example, Roger Shaw, one of our instructional leads last year, told me the story of a young girl who was an honor student who had not been coming to school for two to three weeks. He personally went, knocked on the door. We had, the city police had gone, couldn't find anybody. He went personally, young person peeked out of the window, saw it was him. Turns out, her mother could not afford her medication, was incredibly ill, couldn't do anything. She stayed home for two weeks, right, to care for her mother. That, that's a different situation. That doesn't necessarily mean that that young person needed to go to an alternative learning site. That young person just needed the adults in her life, meaning us, to coordinate with other agencies to make it possible for her to return to school. So part of what we are moving towards really is more of a case-based approach, so that we can answer and respond with a more refined and targeted intervention, rather than just saying, everybody now needs to go to an alternative site. Because in some, in some cases, it's not that they need to be in an alternative site. It's just, it's a housing issue, it's a healthcare issue, it's, it's some other issue that, if we work to address, the young person actually will come to school.
Councilmember Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Santelisa, to you and your team for all your great work for our young people. I had a couple of quick questions, well, maybe, they may, they probably won't be quick, but-
It's okay.
Can you speak a little bit about the transportation assessment? I know that's being done and continues, this conversation that's continued around, you know, trying to reduce the reliance, well, really, trying to reduce the commute time for many of our young people, especially as we experience school closures and, and the commute for young people gets a lot longer. Can you talk a little bit about where things are with just sort of reducing the reliance on, on the MTA and public transit? I know the, the yellow bus thing has been kicked around a few times, but the other thing I wanted to, to ask about is the, the district's relationship with both the State and City Department of Transportation as it relates to trying to think through other, other ways to, to get kids there, so that, whether that's, you know, if there's a new school, trying to make sure that there's, whether, I don't know if bike lanes are okay to talk about these days, but other complete streets tools to, to push for a safer commute for our young people, a, a multimodal commute for young people, whether that's on a bus, on a cab, a skateboard, but as long as they're doing it safely. Can you just sort of speak broadly about transportation? It's something that comes up pretty frequently in, in my district in West Baltimore, where we really don't have a lot of comprehensive access to, to other public transit sources outside of just buses.
No, I definitely will, and I, but I will start by saying, if my general doesn't get to it, Dr. Washington is, is far more equipped to get into the detail of it. I will say, based on overview, that I think it's important to note, one, that we have an increased homeless population of young people, that we absolutely should be serving, and we're charged to serve. But it does mean that it, it puts an additional responsibility in our transportation, because we are committing to get young people from wherever he or she and their family might reside to their actual school of record, right, to help reduce the amount of disruption. And as our homeless student population increases, it's an additional responsibility. The other major driver is choice. And one of the things we've committed to as a city is giving families more options. And frankly, as we work to create, not only in West Baltimore, but in other places, more high-quality options, which is what families are telling us, more high-quality schooling options in their neighborhoods that are closer to home, we're hoping we'll reduce some of that need. In the meantime, though, that adds to the responsibility that we have for transportation. I will say that in terms of, you know, and, and Dr. Washington and Jacinta Hughes, who is our head of transportation, have taken my frustration incredibly well with where we are with transportation. We have a long-range plan to begin to add buses back into the fleet for city schools. But again, with other priorities, it will be slow. It's a bus or two a year, maybe, if funding comes through. So we do know that that gives us increased flexibility, so we are working in that direction. I would also say that we have a challenge with getting bus drivers. And, and, and some of our contracting companies that we work with, we know that drivers that are employed by city schools tend to be much higher quality. Families tend to be relatively much happier with our own employees, but we have to ramp that up. In terms of contracting, we are unfortunately more at the mercy of the state of the market than I want to be or than I'm comfortable being. I think that's why we're using a multi-pronged approach. I think we, our team really does seek to work closely with city and state about transportation. But I will just say, I mean, and I'll just put it out there, since I'm standing here, you know, look, when you have a city that has a wanting transportation infrastructure, it makes the pressure on a school system's transit frankly far heavier than it is in other places I've worked. This is, transportation is often, I mean, I hate to say it, like the elephant in the room that people don't like to talk about as much and name why young people don't get to school, and the long transit times. That being said, we're still working on it. The team's done a good job in queuing up a plan, but I think we all need to also continue to work on building our city's infrastructure. If we had buses that, and this is not to slam anybody, man, look, I know cities' transportation is overworked as well, but I will tell you, when I lived in a different city before coming to Baltimore, we did not need a car. And I could hop on a bus reliably and get my child, my oldest now, across town in 20 minutes on public transportation reliably, and the only reason she was ever late for preschool was because her mother had taken too long in the shower, not because a bus had driven by her and not picked her up. So at some point, we're going to have to grapple with that the lack of infrastructure investment in the city is making it more taxing on our costs and the experiences of young people and families.
So I'll, and I'll, and I'll just, if you, you want to add anything there? Sure.
So the only thing that, additional thing that I want to add with, for Dr. Santelisa, is for our yellow buses, majority of the population that we're transporting, as Dr. Santelisa said, was the homeless population, but also our special needs population. And so we are targeting and looking at, how do we shorten the commute time for our special needs population? Within this school year, we started a new study with consultants to look at bell schedules and the placements of programs and some of those things, looking at our routing program, so that we can make a determination of how we can begin to address some of the commute time. But again, majority of the population that we're transporting on the yellow buses are our special needs population.
And so the point I, I wanted to also just sort of drive beyond, because I know we've talked in committee at length about the yellow bus, the need for yellow buses or other types of buses. The only other thing I'll throw into, to just push back a little bit is, very recently had some experience in working through the, the 21st Century Planning process of a school coming into my district, and were it not for one of my staff members at a community meeting just simply asking the question about drop-off, pickup, transportation around, it literally was not even a part of the planning process at that point, or at least it didn't seem to be. I don't like to speak in, in absolutes, but it felt like there was a little bit of shock from school staff that that was brought up, and it triggered a conversation that needed to be had, and now we, luckily, we are still a significant amount of time out from the opening of that new school, that I think it'll be, I'm confident that we'll come up with a game plan, but it wasn't something that was really seemingly central as a part of that process. And this would be my third time going through the 21st Century schools process, fourth, if you want to count me working in this guy's district before I was elected. And it really felt it was never really sort of a central theme put forth by the school system to figure out. I mean, yes, we want new buildings, we want to know everything that's going inside, we want to make sure that there's engagement, and, and I think that the 21st Century team has done a good job at thinking through all of that. But to, within less than a year out from opening, then be like, oh, we should probably talk about like a transit study or a transportation study for that area with a new building coming in, for me, was a little bit worrisome, knowing that there are, there's going to be, this new opening is going to also have a closure-
Right.
...of another school, and so the commute time for those students coming over is going to be significant. So I would just push and say that, yes, absolutely, Baltimore City does need to do a better job, but it's more, I would also say it needs to be more of a help us, help you, help us, I guess, kind of thing.
Absolutely.
And just be more of a central part of, at least when it comes to new school planning. How do we, and I'm not saying it's not being done, but it, like I said, outsider looking in, sitting in the back of the room, looking at the presentations, didn't really seem to be at, at the forefront as, as much as other really important stuff was as well.
So that's helpful feedback, and, and what we can do is follow up with you on some of that, because I know in some cases, it feels more central, and so the fact that you didn't experience it that way means that's really important feedback for us as we, as we move forward on this.
Yeah. And, and again, I, I'm not saying, I don't want to say it wasn't happening-
No, no, no.
-but that's just sort of what I think the, the feeling in the room was. The other thing I wanted to toss out, and I mentioned this earlier when we were with Wreckin' Parks, that there certainly needs to be, and I know that there, I learned in the previous hearing that there are bi-weekly meetings occurring between Wreckin' Parks and 21st Century in the school system around the, in some instances, closure of Wreck facilities. The thing I'll, I don't want to reiterate and beat that horse like I did earlier around sort of the need for more collaboration, and I'm happy to talk offline about some very specific instances in my district. I will say that I, I hope that this piece can be figured out. I will make the point that even in my own neighborhood with a 21st Century school in it, I, I haven't gotten the feeling that even though there is community-accessible space, that that's resulted in a net added value for the community to access the space. And, and it's mainly just because there's a lot of bureaucracy that comes with getting into a school building that doesn't exist in Wreckin' Parks with the Recreation Center. You know, even I have to get permits, which I'm fine with, to, to enter the building, but I know, you know, I have a, a staff that can navigate all of that. But I think about, you know, a community group that, or a community association that simply just wants to meet in the new school, which in, in instances, the one in my building, that was a priority for them. But it became so difficult for them to do it that they've simply given up, and they're still meeting in the same church basement that they've been meeting in for 20 years now, because for them, it was just like, there's just too many hurdles. But if we're saying, if in instances where we're closing buildings or not renovating Wreck, you know, there's not a coordinated response to the need to have a robust experience for the community, whether that's young people after hours or on weekends, there just needs to be more of a push to make sure that if we're closing centers or building new schools- and we're marketing new space and community accessible space, then that's exactly what it is. And that these aren't just like shiny new buildings that are still closed on the weekends and still closed late at night, when we've heard time and time again that our young people need more access, not less. And so I would say just a push that I know that this isn't logistically working between agencies and everybody, I'm sure there's like eight sides of every story, but it just needs to be figured out because we can't, you know, move forward in this direction where our kids are still trying to figure out where to go. And there's a new 21st century building or renovated building right next to them that they can't get into. And I'm not saying it's the school system's fault solely or the Wreckin' Parks folks, because I've talked to director Moore as well, but I'll just throw that out there as more of a statement, my apologies, Mr. Chair, than a question.
No, no, no. And I think it's a statement that is helpful that you made it. Number one, because we do know we have variability. I know just based on some of the calls I get, we have variability in schools' understanding, right, of what best practices look like when you are giving increased access to community, right? What does that look like? I think one of the pieces I also own very directly and specifically is, you know, one of my charges to school leaders is, you better make sure these buildings are well cared for. Because if I walk through and see this out of place, something coming down, you know, a light fixture ripped down or any of that, then I'm holding you accountable. I think part of the challenge is, which again, I completely own, is that the interpretation sometimes translates into, I got to be really, really rigid on who I'm letting in and when. And so I do think that there's room for us to work together on this. And I do think it's a, it's kind of coming to like, what are the, what are the mutual accountability points, right? Because for example, we still have to pay a custodian. We don't charge community groups what our going rate is for square footage, right? So normally, we have a rate, we charge that rate. Sometimes we're only asking for like $80 or $50 to help with the custodian cost, because the reality is custodians have to be there to clean up the space. So I think part of what we need to do a better job at doing is kind of working together to kind of set both of those kind of expectations and frankly, build up schools' capacity to be open to communities in ways they may not have had to be before. So that's, point well taken.
Okay. And the last thing, you sort of touched on it, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. You touched on it, but just can you speak a little bit about the equity lens that you're looking at when, you mentioned school choice and equity. Can you just go a little deeper on that? And I'll stop there, Mr. Chair, my apologies.
Sure. So with regards to equity, we have taken feedback not only from families using the system, but we also benefited from a study done by the Fund for Educational Excellence that actually tracked which families, from which sections of the city, have access to which programs. And that is everything from programs with entrance criteria, right? So Baltimore City has a long history, long and storied history of having, for example, high schools with entrance criteria. So we're tracking one, who knows that information, how do we get that information out. Chief High Cupboard has already not only reviewed some of the major findings of that report, but I think what we're asking ourselves is with regard to the equity frame, which families, because of a particular set of cultural capital, know how to maneuver the system, know how to maneuver those requirements, those, that information. And it's what I call the informal playground circuit information, right? Like if you're on the right playground at the right time with the right friends, then you know how to maneuver the system. If you are not, because you're working three jobs, because you are in a section of the city where not a lot of young people might attend some of those programs or know where they are, then you are shut out. And so part of what we are looking at first is how do we communicate far more clearly with less clouded language and less reliance on informal cultural networks for families to have that information? So we started some of that this year. I'd say the second part is in our placement of particular programs across the city. If all kinds of academic programs, one type of academic program are only located in two or three schools, then you might be shut out, right, of those programs if you don't, if you don't live in a particular section of the city. And I'll give a real example that happened two weeks ago. We met with some partners about expanding some of our carpentry internships for residential housing. We had a meeting with the lieutenant governor around that. It would have been easy to go to schools that have existing similar programs to that. Well, one of the things that we did is we looked at an area of the city with a large ELL population, and we said, we actually don't have that programming in that section of the city. So an equity-based decision is placing that new program, not where folks might have just known off the top of their head, let's go to the regular players or the, you know, the players that are on top of everybody's head, but why not start a new program in a section of the city where we don't have any carpentry or construction programs, where we can serve a larger number of young people? So I would say there's multiple ways that we are looking at the choice process, but the fund, the fund's report was very stark and very clear in where some of the barriers are. Sure.
Councilman Stokes?
I have two questions, and one is for you, Madam CEO. Parent participation is very important for children to succeed academically. What ways is Baltimore City Schools focusing on parent outreach and how are we setting goals and measuring success?
No, it's a great, it's a great question, Councilman Stokes. So I think one of the ways that we have really tried to move in this area is first, having much more family involvement, participation at the school level rather than the district level in the budgeting process, right? So one of the things we heard over and over again was that the budgeting process left families out. Families had to come halfway across the city to hear about a central budget that they had no way of deciphering and didn't relate to their young people. What we found was very successful this year was actually setting goals, targets, and expectations for principals around what quality family engagement looks like. We did that with the budget process. We're now in the process of doing that for family and community engagement across the board. That's something that Chief High Cupboard is working on. I would also say that we have found that when we meet families, and again, this gets to kind of the transportation piece, as we've had larger gatherings that actually give opportunities for families to learn more about how to support their early learners, how to support. We had a big international family night at the Inner Harbor. We had large numbers of families, of our immigrant families come out to that night. And part of why they came out was because we provided transportation. We sent school buses. And what we have found is that in every instance, when we provide, again, transportation, families come out. Baltimore City families care about their kids and want to be part of that. And then I'd say, third, moving forward, one of the things we'll be presenting to the Board of Commissioners, to our school board, is in the coming months, Chief High Cupboard will actually present a strategic plan for how we build on those early efforts, both at the school level with district-wide events, to actually be able to chart over the next three to four years what we're going to be doing to expand that involvement.
So do you have data that you can share? Can I make a request for what your goals are and your successes?
Sure, we'll be able to do that. And what I can make available to city council is what the targets will be as part of that plan. So as part of that plan is developed, we can make sure, I won't say that it's complete now, because again, Chief High Cupboard just joined us. And so, you know, we're giving her some time to put that together, but as soon as it's available, we'll forward those, those metrics by which we'll be charting our own performance.
Mr. Chairman, did you hear the request?
Yeah.
I gave it to Jeff, but I don't know if you heard it.
I didn't. Can you please restate it?
The request for the setting of goals and measuring success with the parents' outreach. And she says she had some, CEO says she had some data, so I just wanted to hear the request.
And we'll be collecting some data moving forward.
Jeff, you got, what is that, 16?
That's request number 16, yes, Mr. Chair.
And I have one more question, this is for the budget director. Can you explain what determines when students with disability funds are locked versus unlocked? Because you know that General Assembly just passed the money for the casino, which is called lock, but I hear and about, there's not enough money for disability, so that's my question to you.
Yes, there are, there are certain IEP services, Individual Education Plan services, that are required for each individual student. And in order to provide those services, we have, we lock those funds and we provide them centrally. There are other additional funding that we provide to schools for, for those students that we, we give them a little bit more flexibility in how they're going to use those dollars. But there are, there are certain requirements that we have with the state and with the individual education plans for the individual students, that we have to make sure that we lock that down and provide those funds centrally. So we lock them from the beginning.
Do you have that information that you can provide or?
Sure.
Okay. One more request, Mr. Chair.
Jeff, you got it? Can you read that back to me, Jeff?
To provide the, the lock or unlock funds for a person with disabilities, he said they have a requirement, and we're just asking for that information.
Yep, request 17.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Clark?
Good evening, again. And thank you so much for your leadership, really, and for standing there for so many hours without falling down or even complaining. I, I wanted to ask you about the progress that was so well underway, and I haven't kept track in recent months, of the City College Student Effort, and others joined with them from Patterson, to break down the barriers that immigrant and students from, with second languages, the barriers to getting into application schools. And I was so impressed a year ago, of course, my friend here to my left, Councilman Cohen, is how I, I met this group of young people at one of our first hearings and, in his term. And then they, they were so concerned about the inequity, really, the disproportion of students with second, of second language, of second languages, being, and immigrant in general, students, being, being part of the population of application schools. And so they, working with this, the wonderful staff at North Avenue, very intensely, really broke through some barriers and, and very legitimate. I mean, this isn't about, this is about helping young people, not, helping them like with just the logistics of applying and the, and the language of applying and how that can be helped and all. I mean, no, no lowering of any standards, but just access, peer support, encouragement, talking to families so they wouldn't worry about students going so far from the neighborhood to a school. So I was just wondering if we are making progress on that? And I should have asked Councilman Cohen to just hold a hearing on it. But I was thinking about it a lot lately, and I wondered if you could update us or if not, send us some information. They hit about 36 last year that were going into, 36 of their mentees were going, and that's so they knew who they were, the students did, going into freshman year. But I, I don't know what's, whether the project is continued or whether it's, where it's at.
So last year, so thanks for referencing that, the work with those students from, largely from city, but then there were other students involved, the Somos group from city, and then included folks from Patterson. Those students were incredibly impressive, came to us, as you said, with a specific problem that they had identified about the ways in which our entrance criteria was disadvantaging English language learners, and not just showing us the research that supported that, but then also coming up with their own suggestions about what to do about that, which was really impressive. So we put in place some various steps to try to make the process more fair with regard to English language learners. So one issue was if a student in the, when a student is recently entered the country, they might be missing grades from the key year when, when they are an English language learner. So giving an opportunity to replace those grades with more recent grades if they are, if those, that year was impacted. Because the growth when a student become, when first comes into the English language learner program, the growth can be just, you know, astronomically fast. And so if the year when a student is new to the country is the pivotal year for entrance into school, then that, that could be really disadvantage a student who in six months later is in a very different position in terms of their readiness for, for some of these highly competitive schools. So looking at more recent grades, looking at more recent WEATA scores, and then also getting, soliciting the recommendations of some of the English language teachers in the middle grades of students who really require another look. And so we put that in place last year. I, we, we can go back to the team and get an update for you as to what that meant for this year's choice process, because I haven't checked in on that. But we were incredibly appreciative. And then, as you said, the students, the other thing we learned in the conversation with them was that also if you're looking at recently exited students, that there were a large number of students who had been admitted to those programs, but then a significant drop-off in the number of, who were actually coming to some of the, the more competitive programs. And we thought that had to do with about transportation, but also about, you know, creating a cohort, to your point, of people feeling safe about going there. And so the students themselves came up with ideas about how to do kind of fairs of meeting, where students could meet other students to try to encourage them to come. So that was a really impressive piece of work.
So I was, I just want to encourage, and I'd be glad to help, because they're a great crowd. I was thinking, though, students, they have a way of graduating and going off to college in foreign places and not being there to keep doing what they've done so well, which is to sort of raise the perception of what's going on here. Look at the numbers, look at the, some of the causes, and begin to reverse that through peer intervention backed up by very caring and, very caring and skilled professionals at North Avenue.
Well, you're right. And I think your questions today make me realize that we have to make sure that we make sure we're institutionalizing the practice so that it is not dependent on a few people, people who, doing it, a few students who are advocating for it, a few staff members, some of whom may or may not be on maternity leave right now, so I just have to, you know, um.
I hope, oh, you mean the teachers?
No.
It doesn't matter.
One of my key staff, person who worked on that is on maternity.
Oh, okay.
So I've just got to check in to make sure that we've really institutionalized this and that it is.
Right. And that's what happens to so many wonderful efforts, because this is too good to forget. But I, I didn't check in either. And I'm sitting here thinking, oh, my gosh, I bet those students, if they haven't graduated, they're going to now, and what's happening after that? Because it was the peer influence that was the most important part. And then, it's not a question. When I, many years ago, maybe like in the 80s, 1980s of that century, there were six remaining truant officers with the Baltimore City Public Schools. It was a diminished crowd, but they were such a feisty, wonderful crowd, and they loved those kids, and they, they walked the streets, and they knew everybody's name in the world. And I loved them, and they were mean, but they weren't, they were mean to me, but they weren't mean to the kids. But they were mean to the families sometimes that were, were not watching out that their kids got to school. And I mean, I, I really, there's a certain kind of person that would apply for that job, and that person is like, what do you call it, tough love? A tough-love mom. And we need about, at least six or seven of them, I think, to help with just the absences or just the kind of story you told about, a little girl that stayed home because her mom was sick. Well, you just, all you need is some adult to say, wait a minute, you got to be in school. you've got to be in school though, let me go get my sister to come over here and spend the days with you or whatever. I'm not kidding, it's all about people and you know that better than anyone else because that's the business that you're in. Those ladies, they made a huge difference. And the last one I have talked to was Carolyn Brown. That was her name. And pretty much they're all gone now, they're retired, nothing tragic.
Okay.
But.
That's good to know.
But they're retired and there aren't any more of them. Thank you.
No, thank you, thank you.
Council President Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam CEO, for staying with us late this evening. I know you talked about it earlier, but I just want to ask a little bit for more information about the efforts you guys have put in place to increase retention rates among black teachers and to bring more black teachers into the system. Can you talk to, more about that?
No, I definitely can. And if Chief Grant Skinner wants to add any, he should feel free to sit here and do so. One of the things that I think, and this is also something that, you know, I want to say arose from the teachers themselves, which I think is part of what makes it so powerful, is that they began voicing, they also worked with some teacher, teacher-focused organizations, grassroots organizations here in the city. And one of the things that came from that was, from my perspective, hearing a lot from them about some of the same trends and things they were experiencing that matched the national data and the research that I had done with the staff in a previous organization. So a lot of the national work, for example, that Ed Trust has done, that Travis Bristol has done, we were hearing from these teachers. And so part of what happened, and again, Chief Grant Skinner and his team have done a fabulous job in really facilitating these folks coming together. And so they are getting ready to present to me, I have kind of a sneak preview, their recommendations based on the work they've done. That, and they really have, I think, done a really great job in identifying kind of two or three initial areas that they think we as the district can do better in helping to retain African-American teachers. So it, it grew out of their own kind of, you know, displeasure frankly and dissatisfaction with losing so many African-American teachers. And I will steal Chief Grant Skinner's thunder. This is the first year that we have not had any significant decline in the number of African-American teachers leaving the district. And I would argue it is in large part due to the work that these teachers have led, that Chief Grant Skinner and his team have supported and, and the focus we've brought. But do you want to just add a little bit in terms of some of the specifics, Jeremy, in terms of what you guys are finding?
It's on. You're live and ready to go.
So I would share, just the, the group decided to focus on a couple of specific areas. So through the first few months when we were working together, we heard a lot about the interest in additional mentoring opportunities during teachers' first year especially and first couple of years. And we were able to allocate some additional Title I funds to support a pilot for supplemental mentoring in this upcoming year. So it really stemmed from what we heard. We also had members of the group advocate to MSDE and to the Kerwin Commission about certification to ensure that as we across the state seek to raise the bar for entry into the profession, that we were doing so based on information that actually means something. So the state was looking at really increasing test requirements for people who wanted to be teachers. And as a working group, we looked at the fact that data show much, much lower passage rates on the main tests that's used among African-American candidates and, which, which shows us that the test is, has some bias inherent within it. And then the final thing is we're looking at pipelines, how we can help people like paraeducators become teachers more often, working with the Baltimore Teachers Union on that. And then even thinking about ways over the long term to help our students become more interested more often in becoming teachers in the future themselves.
And so just a follow-up question on that. Did you guys, are you guys, I know this is the first year of implementation, but are you measuring the retention rate of black teachers before versus after? Have you seen any early indications? I know like percentage wise, the CEO talked about, can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure, we, at the outset of this, we recognize that our retention rates for black teachers in some years have actually been higher than of other teachers and in some years have been lower. And we wanted to learn more through this working group about the specific reasons that impacted black teachers, knowing that there's a additional impact on students when they can see teachers who look like them. We collected a lot of data mid-year this year from teachers who are staying and who say that they were considering leaving to learn more about that. And I think from people who have come to our meetings, they've, they've appreciated that there's a particular focus in the district on this and we are hoping that after the school year ends and we lead into next school year, that we'll actually see an increase in the, in the rates.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if we can have you guys officially provide that data, that will be very helpful to me, to us. And I think that what you guys are saying about the partnerships and thinking outward onto how to make, reach out, especially with our students, is an important thing. Something else that, that.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, can you?
Yes, sorry about that. Oh, I didn't realize that Mr. Amoros wasn't no longer sitting over there, I'm sorry. Just want the specific data points around the black retention of teachers. The system says they have some data that shows, you know, how many versus leaving, one year versus the next, but also just some historic data that they can provide to us just to give us a better context.
Historic data points on retention of black teachers?
Yes, sir.
Got it.
And then just the last thing is a suggestion, thinking about trying to come up with strategic partnerships around how to increase the black teachers, but also homegrown Baltimoreans that teaches. As we know, we have a lot of our young people that go off to college and we know that a lot of them go off and they major in education and they become teachers. Unfortunately for us, a lot of them do that in other places. But what I would suggest is that especially since, as you know, Madam CEO, as you're a member of the board too, that we have organizations like College Bound that track our students when they're in there in college. We can use the retention program in College Bound and other organizations like that that track our students when they're gone, to figure out ways to come up with a creative program to make sure that we are having our own students come back to be teachers in Baltimore, Baltimore City. There was a once upon a time in 2006 where I personally applied for the teaching residency program. Won't tell you the outcome. I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council President.
Dr. Santalise says, BCPS was not impacted at all by the cybersecurity incident, correct?
That is correct.
Bob, I think at our last briefing, you said that the fiscal impact to the city was eighteen point two million dollars, plus or minus?
Yes, that's, that's right. We estimated, we're estimating ten million dollars of costs and eight point two million dollars of either lost or deferred revenue.
Okay. And that doesn't even account for personnel productivity, as I'm sure you can imagine. Can you talk about what steps the IT office at City Schools has taken to protect against cyber attacks? What investments you've made and what you, what you plan to make in that area?
Sure, no, and we actually gave a similar update to, to our board during the last board meeting because for obvious reasons, they too wanted an update on where we were with this. So one of the other things I will add to your list that we will forward to you is again, that update in more detail in terms of the written update. Overall, I can say, one, that one of the things that we have done is, is shifted and are shifting to a far more cloud-based information storage for us so that our backup actually is not within kind of existing hardware anymore, where we have moved it to the cloud. The other piece is, we had in the budget and I was very glad that we approved it and kept it in the budget. And that was, as I know that our colleagues in the city have found, is actual insurance for when something does happen, making sure that we have coverage to cover the cost because as our colleagues have stated, it, we do know that it is indeed very expensive. So we've been looking at our servers, we will be doing some updates to that. But I'd say those are the main shifts that we've made. If there's anything else anybody wants to add, you can, those are, those are the big ones.
And we should definitely give you the information from the IT person because we are definitely not the IT people. But I will say just also making sure, we, we have been trying to keep up with the patches and so on that we're getting from the main, you know, software that we use to make sure that we're up to date on that.
So Jeff, you got the request from the council president, then the next request was the present, cybersecurity presentation. I saw my constituent Cheryl smiling, great minds think alike.
... specific questions and they had seven very specific answers to those questions along these lines.
Okay, yeah, if you could, would you be willing to provide us just that package? So let's just leave that as one request, Jeff.
It was a response.
There was a procurement item that was a laundry list of different IT items and we used that as the occasion to say, so, what are we doing? And so that we need to just get the transcript of the responses to those questions.
And we can forward that to you.
No, that, that's great and thank you to the board for, for thinking like that. We seem to not be thinking like that in city government, unfortunately. I'd also be curious if you could get a, a written response as to whether or not you have patch management policies in place? I don't need to see them, but patch management policies in place, a continuity of operations plan and a disaster recovery plan? And I'm, I'm, I can only assume you have all of those.
Yep, we have it on our side.
So patch management policy, disaster recovery plan and continuity of operations plan.
Yeah.
I would hate to see a scenario, and it's, we all know it's possible in this day and age, where the school system is crippled like city government was, where the, the people who are hurt most are our kids because they're unable to, to learn because, you know, our North Avenue systems and as well as systems at schools are crippled, so. My next question is around contracting. And I'd like to commend you, I know in fiscal eighteen, according to the budget book, City Schools spent approximately two hundred and fifteen million dollars on external contracts. That's been reduced to a hundred eighty-seven million dollars as proposed in fiscal twenty. Can you talk a little bit about what those services are that you contract for? What, what makes up the lion's share of that?
Yeah, so what I will do is, so we do know that a large number of the contracts, and just because we were talking about it earlier, is transportation, right? So we have a large number of transportation contracts. We also have a large number of contracts that cover our building's maintenance and servicing. And that, I would say, has also been reduced this year due to Dr. Washington's really restructuring. She did, she and her team did a fabulous job in terms of redeployment of staff because of the investment we're required to make as part of the Twenty First Century Plan. I think she and her team very wisely added to our internal capacity to maintain building, buildings which drove down the cost of contracting that we would need. Those are the two big ones, John, are those the major ones? Yeah, so we can supply you with the list, but the majority of contracting falls in those, in those two departments. We can get you a breakdown. We certainly have contracts that fall, you know, in, for example, academic materials and all of that. But if you look at the lion's share of our contracting, most of it falls in those two categories.
Yeah, if you could get us a list of the contracts and let's say anything in excess of a hundred K.
Okay.
I don't want you scrambling to, to put together a list of small contracts.
Sure, we can do that.
Colleagues? Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Santalise. Again, two more good news stories for any of our friends in the local media that might be watching at nine fifteen at night, especially Fox forty-five. Policy JBB, really proud to see us as a school system recognizing the specific needs of our trans and gender non-binary students. And I will say that, thank you to the board and that the city is following behind you on that and doing some work on making sure our restrooms, our single-stall restrooms are gender-inclusive. So thank you for that. And also you mentioned the International Family Night, I was there, it was great. I missed you, but it was, it was really nice.
I'm sorry, I missed you, good.
And just to, again, reiterate that when we provide transportation, families show up.
They do.
Wanted to talk about the infusion of dollars that's going to come in for community schools. We know that that is a specific part of Kerwin that is going to happen. And so wanted to hear from you. I know Ms. Hike Hubbard has been also doing, doing good work on this as well. But just how we are preparing ourselves for all of the, the new community school money? How, again, we're going to think through an equity lens about who becomes a community school? How we keep the metrics high? I know that the state had been looking at a policy I went up and testified on to codify what it meant to be a community school. And so just from both a, how are we thinking about it? How are we going to do quality control? What's it going to look like in terms of partnerships? If you could just dig into that a little bit?
Sure, and I'm glad that you mentioned that Chief Hike Hubbard has been, she's basically hit the ground running on that one. She, how long have you been here, Tina?
Eight weeks. And so in only her first eight weeks, one of the major areas of focus that she's had really is working on this community school strategy. She has done it and it's a major driver of why she's with us is because her expertise in actually coming together with people, not kind of unilaterally deciding. So we are partnering, continuing to partner very closely with the Family League who has been kind of a great partner in thinking through, what does this strategy now look like given this infusion, right, of community school coordinators that we're going to have? I think the other piece is working with our existing community school partners and it's work that we have been doing over the last year to really get to a place where we have, to your point, standards. Standards of what comprises a community school? What are the right targets for a community school? While at the same time, still preserving what we've heard from schools and communities that they want most. And that is still some room to be able to tailor to the particular needs of that community. So there may be one community that prioritizes access and partnerships with healthcare. There might be another school that says, actually, we really want to prioritize early GED services for parents and families. So part of what Chief Hike Hubbard is doing with the fam, in partnership with the Family League is really bringing to bear a lot of that, those early conversations around, to your point, kind of what are the standards? What are the non-negotiables, for lack of a better term, in a community school that also allow some of that same flexibility? I think what we will find, and we've also, by the way, I should also add that we have been partnering with the mayor's new office of, and Tisha's going to kill me, I can't remember the official office. What is it? Thank you, Children and Family Success. We've been partnering with that office early on, again, to make sure that we are aligning our resources. So Ms. Edwards has been part of some of those conversations as well. I think the real challenge for us is going to be really getting to the point where we can collect the data as we have to report back to the state. Because now with the infusion of state money, the reporting requirements, the ability to demonstrate growth and impact is going to increase. And so a lot of what we're working together on now is how to take the work from some of our best community school partners, and I know you know many of them yourself, as other city council members have visited and know some of our best ones. It really now is translating to make sure we have that across the board. Because we are going to be held accountable for the expenditure of that money.
And do you want to say a little bit about what it looks like in terms of the community-based partnerships? You know, again, we can lift up some of the really good ones that we know of and then there are some less good ones where, for whatever reason, there are some less good ones, where, for whatever reason, whether it's the school leadership isn't fully bought in, or the partner isn't willing or able to work with the culture of the school. I've heard all sorts of different reasons, it just isn't working. So could you speak specifically about that piece?
So one of the things that we are going to begin doing in far more robust ways is tracking some of the data around which partners actually have successful partnerships. So we have trends already. We know already some of the partners for whom all of the schools they work with are strong relationships. Similarly, I will say, internal to city schools, we are also doing a better job in focusing on our ability to, one, communicate to principals that this is part of your responsibility. And because it's part of your responsibility, this is something you're going to be evaluated on. So that's kind of the accountability end. But on the support end, to your point, when we know that we have very robust community schools with partners that are working well and have been working well for a long time, like we know, for example, that a number of our schools that work with the YMCA, that those, that partner across the board has rave reviews from the school-based staff and a lot of others. And so then the question becomes, how do we prepare, better prepare, frankly, and support principals in how you maximize this resource of a community schools coordinator? So there's been a lot of work on the community schools subcommittee, to the credit of my colleagues who work on that with us, around how do we begin to lift up the best practices so that we have a place, frankly, to send a principal who's like, I'm not really sure what it means to have a robust community school, I'm not really sure what that means for my role as principal. We should be able to have kind of a tangible connection made between that principal and colleagues that are doing a good job. So I would say on both ends of the spectrum, one, kind of a willingness to come out and say, not every partner is a high-quality partner, at the same time, to be able to say, not every school leader is equally prepared, to be able to maximize the partnership. And that's kind of the next tier of questions that really get to the quality issue. Does that answer your question?
It does. Just, you know, again, we'll say critically important that as this money rolls out, as the accountability around it rolls out, that we all wrap our arms around it, see it as a winning strategy for Baltimore, I know you do as well. You know, again, this council had a battle with the previous administration over making sure we were fully funding community schools, at least on our side with the Family League. And again, I see it as a driver of success, and not to a point I've heard you make before, not something that is going to erase poverty, or structural racism, or all the things we know impact student learning, but a really important part of the strategy for Baltimore, and look forward to continued partnership around community schools.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Colleagues? Any other questions? Dr. Santalises, Cheryl, team, thank you very much for all the work that you're doing. Really appreciate you staying here with us late tonight. We're now in recess, we'll be back tomorrow morning at nine AM.
Great, thank you.